Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Calum Zoo City Commission to order for Monday, June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen. Clerk Worland, please call the role.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Melzark.
Present.
Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Urban. Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Hopewell.
President, may we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Urban? So move by Commissioner Anderson.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Communications Manager, Ritzman.
Yeah, one item this evening. I'd like to remind everyone and invite everyone that wasn't aware to a rededication of our Parks and Recreation Building at Mayor's Riverfront Park, rededicating it in the honor of Lois Jackson. That'll be this Friday at four P. M. at the Parks Rec Building at Mayor's Riverfront Park.
Okay. Vice Mayor, are you able to cover that?
Uh.
Okay. We're now at discussion topics, C. One, Regulation of Medical Marijuana. Mr. Manager? Or, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Oh.
I will go with Cody.
All right.
I have it.
Wow. Thanks, guys.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
This is the time that is a workshop on state and local regulation of medical marijuana. What has been, at least for me, a hot topic. I don't think a week has passed since late September of last year when my office, or even other offices in the city, haven't received some type of inquiry as to what is the city of Calum Zoo gonna do in light of legislative enactments last fall. And this is, to give you an idea, is to, and I'll show you what the presentation's gonna do. I'll give you a short history of medical marijuana in Michigan, an overview of the statutes that were adopted last fall, and what we are proposing to do as administration to present to the commission in response to that change in law. First, the overview, the marijuana timeline as I've provided to you. Medical marijuana became a safe haven. I'm not gonna say legal because it is still, marijuana remains a Schedule One drug under federal law. It remains a Schedule One drug under state law. It is illegal to use, possess, grow, use unless you have a medical marijuana registration card as either a patient or a caregiver. And that is what the legis, and that is what Michigan voters approved in two thousand eight. And this will get important. In two thousand ten, Calum Zoo voters adopted, I'm sorry, the City of Calum Zoo Commission permitted caregivers to operate as a home occupation. We basically did not regulate it, we just said it is permitted. If you are a caregiver, you can service the patients that you are registered for out of your home. Then in two thousand twelve, Calum Zoo voters adopted Charter Section one ninety-nine that provided the authorization for three medical cannabis dispensaries. I will return to that theme later on in the presentation as to what that wrinkle means in terms of our response. The reason why, and you say, well, if that was adopted, why didn't medical cannabis dispensaries go into operation here in Calum Zoo? Well, at the time this charter amendment was voted by city voters, the case of People versus McQueen was argued before the Michigan Supreme Court. So I said, let's wait and see what the Supreme Court says. And then in February, the court decided People versus McQueen, that basically made commercial sale of marijuana unlawful and created a problem in what kind of model would work to be profitable. In essence, a caregiver who decided to operate a dispensary could only sell to five customers. I don't know of any commercial operation that's gonna make it if you only have five retail customers that you can sell to. And therefore, a lot of communities didn't authorize dispensaries within their community. I know there are some. I know there's some in Ann Arbor, I know there's some in Lansing. They were kinda grandfathered in, and I don't know how they are operating lawfully. But there are, at least by knowledge, there are no dispensaries operating in the city of Calum Zoo. Then we move on to last fall. And there were three bills that were, worked their way through the legislature that were adopted by the legislature in, I think, September twenty-sixth, then subsequently signed into government, by the governor. They took effect on December twentieth of last year. And basically, taken together, they create a Facilities Licensing Act, they create a Tracking Act, and there were certain amendments made to the MMA, which is the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, the act that was passed by the voters in two thousand eight, who amended it to create other types of products that could be used by patients. And I will go into that a little bit more in detail. Basically, though, the reason there are no facilities operating as yet is because the legislation provided that the first time an individual can apply for one of the facilities licenses that will be issued by the state is not until December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. So basically, it gave the state and local municipalities a little more than a year to prepare for December of this year. So what did they do? And I'm gonna go these, go in reverse order. First, Public Act two eighty-three amended the Medical Marijuana Act by adding a couple of definitions. They permitted and defined marijuana-infused products. Basically, this is something that you can use other than by smoking, whether it's a, an application, whether it is using it in edibles, and apparently they're known as medibles, as I've learned. But basically, you can, other than ingesting it by smoking, you can use it as, ingest it by eating, or sometimes making a topical application. And it is not uncommon, there are marijuana butters, there are, people use it in food products. I attended a presentation by the Substance Abuse Council over the lunch hour today, and there's something known as ganja guac, so that you put marijuana in your guacamole. And so if you're gonna permit marijuana that is normally in leaf form, you're gonna permit it to be in a usable equivalent. The state also defined what is one ounce of usable marijuana. And it is, and as I've show, one ounce is equal to sixteen ounces of marijuana-infused product, so one ounce of marijuana equals sixteen ounces of brownies, for instance. The other thing that it did, it prohibited butane extraction of plant resin within, or within the yard or curtilage of a residential structure. Apparently, that, and again, I'm not familiar with the industry, apparently that is one way to pull the THC or cannabinoids out of the plant is by using butane as a refining agent. Unfortunately, some people have blown up their houses using that. So the state law prohibits butane extraction of plant resin in residential areas. And they also add, and this is not part of the three bills that were adopted in September, this came online in December, but it became effective earlier this year, again, another amendment, that permits a landlord to put in a written lease, a prohibition against using leased property for cultivation, or using marijuana on leased premises. But the landlord has to put that in their lease. So again, the property owner doesn't have to permit a lessee to use the property in violation of the law, or even with, even if you've got a card, landlord can prohibit that. The next thing is the Tracking Act. And this is a, and the idea is, this is a seed-to-sale approach or licensing scheme, and in order to track that, Public Act two eighty-two basically says that there will be a tracking system employed from grower all the way to ultimate consumer. And this, if you will, is, a contractor has been authorized by the state, as I've learned, and they have to deliver a functioning system by one hundred and eighty days after the award of the contract. So presumably, there will be a monitoring system. I assume it's gonna be used with barcodes and the like. Again, I don't have any details because it's gonna be run by the state, it's under the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, so when I refer to LARA, that's what I'm referring to. Then finally, we get to the real meat of what the legislature did, is Public Act two eighty-one, and it created five types of facilities that are, can be authorized. First is a grower, and there's three classes of it, and that's maximums. So the most you can have is fifteen hundred plants, is a Class C grower. A processor is, again, a manufacturer who actually extracts the resin from the plant and also creates the marijuana-infused products. A secure transporter is, again, a facility that moves marijuana and cash associated with the sale between facilities. They also can store, I assume they may pick up marijuana late on one day and deliver it the following day, so they have some storage capability. A safety compliance facility is a testing facility. They will take samples of the marijuana and test it for its potency, for the amount of THC cannabinoids, as well as any contaminants, whether it's mold, if it's anything like pesticides or any of that, that's in the product. So they will give a readout on that, and you can track that. And then finally, the provisioning center is what is called a dispensary, and they're the ones that actually sell the products, but they can only sell them to registered patients and caregivers. Can't sell them to the general public. So you need a card in order to get a medical marijuana from a provisioning center. Let me start at the state level first. Then, what is, the key is the Medical Marijuana Licensing Board, and that has, those five individuals were appointed by the governor in late May. There is a Calum Zoo area person on that, a woman who is a pharmacist in, for Walgreens in the Matteawan area, or she lives in the Matteawan area, is a Walgreens pharmacist in Calum Zoo. She's on that board. It places the administration of the whole marijuana with, again, LARA. But within LARA, they have created a Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation. I think that's an interesting acronym. So this is the bummer bureau that's gonna control marijuana and regulation within the state. The state issues licenses will be good for one year and can be renewed. And however, in order to get that facility, you gotta be able to show that the municipality authorizes you to operate within their confines. And what will happen is, if I'm applying for a facility license, one of those five types of licenses, I've gotta be able to demonstrate to the state that the community that I wanna locate in is, authorizes me to do so. And the city, once we get notice of the application, has ninety days to supply proof of its, the permission and its ordinances to the state. It's a little unsure how that's gonna work, whether we can do a one-time submission, if we permit them all, or it has to be individually for each applicant. Some of that is going to be sorted out by the rules that'll be adopted by the licensing board, and the licensing board met for the first time today, as I understand it. So they're gonna be busy promulgating rules. They also have to pass on and grant licenses for every application. So I don't know how many applications they're gonna get come December fifteenth of this, this fall, but I know this, if, I'm assuming that if they permit electronic applications, the state website's gonna crash. I just feel that there's a lot of folks who are gonna wanna make that application because they think if they get in first, they have a better chance. And I don't know that that's necessarily the case. So in order to get a state license, there are some restrictions, and I won't go through them all, but basically applicants must be relatively crime-free. None of us are eligible because we are elected or governmental employee. And Michigan residents have first shot at these facilities if, until a year from now. You have to show that you've been a Michigan resident for at least two years in order to get a license. After that, then anybody can apply. And the assumption is there would be a lot of out-of-state applications about a year from now when that two-year Michigan resident requirement falls off. They talk about the nature of the license as a revocable privilege, it's not a property right, and by attempting to define it as such, that if you have a property right, you get a lot of due process and other protection under law. But if you got a revocable privilege, then you don't have as much protection. We'll see what happens with the courts, how they interpret that as we go forward, but this is gonna be a gray area going forward. The other question is subject to examination at any time by law enforcement. Again, there's a certain amount of due process, and there is also some conflicting language within the act itself as to whether or not you have to, law enforcement officer has to abide with general constitutional limitations regarding Fourth Amendment search and seizure, or do they have carte blanche, they can just walk in at three o'clock in the morning and say, I'd like to inspect your premises. Again, that'll be an answer for the court, it's still a gray area. Again, the licensee must do some background checks on their prospective employees who must, again, be somewhat free from criminal violations in regard to substance, controlled substance violations. The state's gonna be collecting some money, and I'll get to what money the city may get in a moment. And none of these have been set except for the last one. First, there's gonna be a non-refundable state application fee. So if you're looking to get a license from the state, one of the five, there's gonna be an application fee. That's yet to be set. I heard, again, at the presentation I heard this afternoon, it is speculated that it may be as high as ten thousand dollars, just to make an application, not knowing you're gonna get awarded a state license. And then there will be, on top of that, there will be a state regulatory assessment for every kind of facility except the safety compliance centers, basically the testing centers. They're not subject to the state regulatory assessment. And then the final one is a three percent tax on retail sales at provisioning centers. And that's gonna be kind of interesting. Let me, let me talk about that for just a moment. That three percent tax on retail sales then be, be shared with municipalities. So I'll let you kinda go through this, and this is, this is, is it kind of, is it worth the hassle kind of thing for local municipalities? I have seen presentations since this has come online that there might be up to a billion dollars of retail sales in the state of Michigan in any one year. So, and that's on the high end, I'll admit, some are, some are as low as six hundred and fifty. But even assuming on the high end, let's say there is a billion dollars of medical marijuana retail sales in one year in the state of Michigan. And so you get a three percent tax on that one billion, so that knocks it down to thirty million. That will go in, that would be, you'd collect in this excise tax fund. So you got thirty million. Of that thirty million, cities get twenty-five percent of it. So that, under the state law, cities, there's, counties get some, sheriffs get some, the state police get some, the state of Michigan gets some, but municipalities, cities, villages, and townships will get, that's reserved twenty-five percent of that, using my example, thirty million bucks. So that takes you down to seven and a half million dollars. Okay? Now you got seven and a half million dollars. You say, okay, Clyde, how much of that is gonna come to the city? They're gonna take all the facilities that are across the state, and then you get your pro-rata share. So on the low end, let's say there are one thousand facilities across the state, and the Calum Zoo has ten. We get one percent of the seven point five million, or seventy-five thousand dollars. But if there are five thousand facilities across the state and we only have ten, then we only get fifteen thousand. So, and I don't know where those numbers are gonna be. So, and remember, I'm using a high number to begin with, with retail sales, a billion, and I'm assuming anywhere from a thousand to five thousand facilities, and the city would have maybe ten. Obviously, those numbers change if you use different assumptions, but I think it's a bit of a crapshoot as to how much money will come to the city from the state if we authorize facilities within the community. So what are our local options? What can we do? The first one is do nothing, just wait and see. And I can, I was at a conference over the weekend with other municipal attorneys, and I was asking, what is your community doing? And a lot of communities are taking a wait-and-see. They're doing nothing. They want to see how, what the state rules look like. They wanna see what some of the bigger communities are doing, some of the problems they may have. And so a lot of communities are doing nothing, and if they do nothing, then no facility can locate in the community. It is key, in order to locate a facility in a, in a community, you have to demonstrate that the community authorizes that type of facility. So, and you don't have to take an affirmative action in order to preclude them. If you just sit on your hands, no facilities can locate in your community. Or you can, you can be a little more proactive if you want. You can adopt an ordinance or resolution that affirmatively bans them. Then there's the third option, and you can adopt, and this is permitted by the statute. You adopt an ordinance authorizing one or more types of medical marijuana facilities, and you can limit the number of each type. What you can't do is, the city may not regulate the purity or pricing of the product. We can't interfere or conflict with any state regulations, which have to be drafted as of yet. We may establish an annual non-refundable fee of up to five thousand dollars to defray our costs for administering and enforcing our ordinances, and that is just that five thousand dollars out of hand. There is a concept in Michigan law that if you're gonna put a fee, or charge a fee for some type of administrative function, that the cost of the fee has to approximate the actual cost incurred by the city. So unless the city can demonstrate actual five thousand dollars of expenses in handling the administration of licenses, we can't collect five thousand dollars. If it's, turns out to be only three thousand dollars or twenty-two hundred bucks, that's all we can charge. And again, this makes us eligible to receive that proportional share of the excise fund that will be collected. So what have we, what have we done? Since, I'm trying to think when we start, when we gathered, there's been a work group, and I'll mention, their names will be up here later, within the city comprised of members from the city clerk's office, K. V. At, Economic Development, planning and zoning, and my office. We've been meeting right along, and so if the city chooses to get involved in permitting facilities within the community, there's three things that need to be done. First is, we, as I said, in two thousand ten, the city authorized home occupation for caregivers. There have been some changes in the Medical Marijuana Act since two thousand ten, and those really should be brought, our ordinance should be brought up to date. So it's, so there's, that's the first thing. And we would have to do that even if you didn't do anything more, other than repeal the home occupation. That should be done, and it has to go through the Planning Commission. Secondly, we have to do, go through the Planning Commission also to amend the zoning code. So as to identify where the various types of facilities may be located. I don't think that every facility's gonna work well in a residential zone. So we say, okay, you can have it in a certain commercial and manufacturing zones. So we have to amend the general code. Then, I mean, that, finally, we have to amend the general code, which is the police power. What are we going to do? Are we gonna permit and limit them? Are we gonna say, you can have this type of facility and not this kind? Are we gonna say you can have this number? Or are we gonna, and we have to create a licensing process, and we have to set forth the responsibilities and obligations of facility operators. Now I'm gonna get into that because not everybody, you don't, if you're not involved in the trade, I guess, you don't realize some of the challenges that can come about in dealing with medical marijuana, or marijuana in general, if you're processing it. As I've already alluded to, butane, butane extraction can be a fairly dangerous process. So how are you gonna store that butane? How are you gonna use it? So the goal, however, if the city commission chooses to go forward with this, is to have these ordinances adopted and in effect by the time that December fifteenth window opens at the state level. So here are some of the issues that we, as a work group, took on. Should all types of facilities be permitted in the city? If you are a grower under state law, you can only be located in an industrial or agricultural zone. There are no agricultural zones in the city of Calum Zoo, but we do have manufacturing. So that's close enough to industrial. So where should they be, they can only be located in the manufacturing zones. Where should they be permitted? Again, what kind and where? Should they be clustered or dispersed? For instance, if you have a medical marijuana dispensary, do we want one on every corner in one part of the neighbor, in one part of the city, or do we wanna spread them out? How proactive should the city be in actually looking at license application qualifications? And then where do medical cannabis dispensaries? Remember Section one ninety-nine? They define things a little bit differently because nobody had a crystal ball, so nobody in two thousand twelve knew what the state was gonna do in two thousand sixteen. So we now have two kinds of facilities. We've got the provisioning center that's identified and defined in state law, and then we also have cannabis dispensaries at the local level. How do they fit with one another, or can't they fit? And then one of the other things we looked at is how have communities in other states addressed the commercialization of medical marijuana? So this is what we're, this is being suggested. I wanna point out that there are some draft ordinances. They will be put on the city's website, and they'll be made available to commissioners and the public. But I wanna stress that these are just draft ordinances. Nothing's set in stone. Everything's subject to change, but it's, from the work group's perspective, this is the direction we think is advisable to proceed. So the first thing is, we're gonna permit all five types of facilities, growers all the way to provisioning centers. So the question then becomes, if we're gonna permit them, how many, should they be and where should they be located? Well, let's talk about where should they be located. So the growers, if you're Class A, Class B, the smaller type of operations, they can locate in either an M. One or an M. Two. M. One is the less intense manufacturing district in the city. M. Two's more general, it's more intense manufacturing, can be located in those, that zoning district. So the Class C type of facility with fifteen hundred plants has to be located in an M. Two zone. With smaller, two smaller ones can locate in either one or the other. And I give, the bottom of the slide basically describes what a grower does. What are they permitted to do? And some of the restrictions that they are under pursuant to state law. Those are, that, those bullet points underneath, those are not city of, city requirements, those are state requirements that we would have to follow. Next is the processor, the ones who can extract the resin from the plant. And again, we're gonna permit them both in an M. One and an M. Two zone. And again, here's, here's what they do. They, like the grower, they have to make use of the statewide monitoring system that's permitted under Act two eighty-two. And they must also, they must employ a former caregiver, at least for twenty twenty-one, but that person can't be a current caregiver. So if you are actively involved as a registered caregiver and you're taking care of marijuana patients, you are ineligible to be employed at a processor facility. But a processor facility must have a former caregiver as an employee until twenty twenty-one, when that requirement drops off. Again, that is a state requirement. That's not the city's requirement. Next is the secure transporter, and again, we're permitting them in the manufacturing districts. Also, as a, in a community commercial by special use, the secure transporter is the one that moves marijuana and marijuana-infused products between facilities. They also can transport cash. They may not transport to a caregiver or a patient. They, if you are a secure transporter, you can't have an interest in any of the other kinds of facilities. And you can't be a patient or a caregiver in operated transportation. Drivers must have a chauffeur's license, be relatively free from criminal prosecution, and each vehicle must employ a two-person crew, and one who must stay with the vehicle when the other one's going into a facility. And that's, I mean, they could have a three-person crew if they want, but at a minimum, they have to have a two-person crew. Now, the question becomes, and I had a conversation with a alcohol firearms and ATF, Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms Agent. The question becomes, well, can these security folks carry a weapon? I mean, we've seen rinks people all the time with, taking money from this facility and banks and the like. They usually have a sidearm. The ATF agent says, no, that's a violation of federal law because you're carrying a firearm in association with a controlled substance. And it's a, I mean, as I recall, if you're under federal law, and again, don't quote me because I don't provide. And it's a, I mean, as I recall, if, if you're under federal law, and again, don't quote me because I don't prosecute this type of offense at the federal level, I think it's a one-year penalty for small amounts of marijuana. But if you've got a firearm, that can be enhanced by up to another five years. So carrying a firearm with the marijuana is more serious than than just if you don't have the firearm. And the ATF agent says, that's, that's illegal. And I asked, what do you do in Colorado and Oregon? It's illegal. So it, it depends on where the ATF agent is located, what the US Attorney for that area, how they view it. So it's, but the company line from the ATF is, you can't do it. And I, at the presentation I heard this afternoon, apparently what other states do is, so as to get around this, they use two vehicles. The first vehicle has the marijuana and the cash in it, and those folks are not armed. But then they have a tail vehicle where they are armed. And as, and, and under Michigan law, unlike some states, the vehicle can't bear any markings that they are a secure transporter. In Colorado, I've seen some pictures where they have a big white van with a big green leaf on it on the side. So you kind of know what they're about. But in Michigan, they're going to fly beneath the radar. Then the safety compliance center, this is the testing center. Again, they should be much like a lab. They should be a low intense use. Oftentimes, they're probably not going to support themselves necessarily by just doing marijuana. They're going to be testing other substances as well. And I'm given to understand, there is one, a testing center in Kalamazoo that is currently testing marijuana. But again, they will test for contaminants, how much THC, the active ingredient in. But there's also cannabinoids. So there's two things, and I, I think, as I understand it, the THC gives you the high. Whereas the cannabinoids don't give you the high, but they actually may have some therapeutic abilities. That, that does call into question whether marijuana should remain a Schedule I drug. But the, the research seems to be showing that the cannabinoids may have some medical use for certain types of maladies. The THC, as I understand it, doesn't necessarily have a, a medical use in that it can't be used for treatment, but it can stimulate appetite. So if you're on a cancer medicine, and, and apparently it also may help with pain because apparently the THC does do something for the pain receptors, and it will obviously stimulate appetite. I mean, I think that everybody knows about the munchies, I guess. And so that's really what you're talking about if there's, and if you're, the THC will make you, make you, permit you to eat where you might otherwise have an appetite. Again, the, they must use a statewide monitoring system. The lab space can't be accessible to the public, and this is, again, this is going to be filled out by rule. The statute says, one staff member with an advanced degree in medical or laboratory science. I don't know what that means. Do you have to have a master's degree? Do you have to have more than an associate's degree? I, I don't know. I'm assuming probably a master's degree or PhD, and I don't know what medical or laboratory sciences will qualify. Whether biology is good enough, or you, there's some other discipline. But that'll be settled by administrative rule by the licensing board. Then finally, the provisioning center. Again, same as for the testing centers. They have to purchase their marijuana from a grower or processor. They only can sell to patients and caregivers. And they can only sell tested and labeled marijuana. Again, they are, and they cannot permit consumption or use of alcohol or tobacco on the premises. So there is under the law, and this is again, one of those things that develop because it's an alcohol-based product. So again, maybe that'll be resolved by the rulemaking process. And also, a physician is not allowed on the premises to examine or, or to issue certifications for medical marijuana use. So let's get to the, the quandary that we were thrown in because of Section 199 of the city charter. And again, they define, it's called a medical cannabis dispensary, not a provisioning center. So is it a provisioning center or is it something else? As defined, it has to be operated by one or more patients or caregivers. So you're restricting the dispensary to be operated by a certain type of individual. They must be located in a visible storefront. They must be at least 500 feet under the safe schools, drug-free school zone, it has to be at least 1,000 feet. So that's easily done. They, the, the city charter only permits an annual fee of $3,000, as opposed to the $5,000 for this type of thing. They limit our, the charter provision limits the hours of operation, and it requires that at least, there must be at least three. Then the final section of the charter amendment is, if Michigan repeals penalties for possession of marijuana, i.e. legalizes marijuana for recreational use, this charter amendment becomes null and void. And there is a movement to put legalization or recreational marijuana on the ballot in 2018. As I understand it, there, there's an effort to gather those petition signatures as, as we speak. There was an attempt, as you may recall, last, because some of the signatures were stale. They weren't collected within a requisite amount of time. So we, this, this may go by the by, but we won't know, at least for another year. Further, in terms of zoning regulations, what about separation distances? As I alluded to, the drug-free school zone, 1,000 feet. And I, and for comparison purposes, I'm showing where, how close alcohol sales can be to some of these. Alcohol sales are not in regard to a lot of these, but they're, because they're only limited to churches and schools. But this gives you an idea of what we're suggesting in terms of separation distances. And I would also point out, the only ones that are really mandated are schools and playgrounds. Worship centers are not in there under the drug-free school zone. But these are things that we are proposing as, as the, the task force that the city commission adopt. You'll make note of the zoning residential district, that's only applicable to grower manufacturing facilities. And that's because they are a little more intense. There's also as a noxious odor, I'll get into that in another slide a little bit later, associated with great quantities of marijuana. That should not be a problem if you're a transporter or a process, I mean, sorry, transporter testing center or provisioning center. So here's, what are we going to, how many of these facilities are we going to permit in the city? And for growers, no limitation. Processors, none, as you can see. Provisioning centers, we're suggesting one for every 10,000 city residents. That would mean seven. And the, we'll permit cannabis dispensaries, and we're going, the three that's required by the charter, but that would be included in the seven. So it'd be three cannabis dispensaries, four provisioning centers is what we're suggesting for the city. And so you ask, well, how'd you come up with one for every 10,000? And other communities have done something similar to that in, in Colorado. And it's, it's a bit of a shot in the dark in terms of, we don't know what the demand is, but one for every 10,000 seemed reasonable. And here's, here's the census. Now, the, the number in parents for Kalamazoo is, the information I received at the lunch seminar I attended this afternoon, that was put on by the Substance Abuse Council of Kalamazoo. So they're a little higher, but the ones in regular type are taken directly from the Michigan statistical report that was issued in December of last year. So that's the official number. I don't know where the Substance Abuse Council got their numbers. They're a little higher. So, but both for Kalamazoo County, not for the city, this is a number of patients and caregivers that are registered with the state of Michigan for Kalamazoo and its surrounding counties. So you can see, obviously, we're, being the more populous county, we lead in numbers. So the question is, if there are 4,000 or maybe as close as 5,000 patients, how many provisioning centers do you need to serve 5,000 patients? So what are some of the, the issues I've already alluded to? Trafficking in marijuana is still illegal unless you've got a card. And this is, this permits the commercialization of the medical marijuana business. It's still a Schedule I substance. So, and it's also heavily cash oriented because of the fact that federally chartered organizations like banks are a little afraid to do business with a marijuana business because they could be accused of aiding a criminal enterprise under federal law. So they back off of that. And so they, since they can't do banking, it's a cash-oriented business. Now, I'm given to understand that there is some more sophisticated operators, particularly provisioning centers, may have the ability to accept Bitcoin or some type of a card that you could get some cash, a, a cash value to, that you can, if you're purchasing marijuana, you slip your card through a reader, and it automatically deducts the quantity of your purchase. So there's no cash done, it's all an electronic transaction. So that would help to some degree, but I don't know if every provisioning center is going to be that sophisticated. So in essence, medical marijuana facilities, even if they're not cash-oriented, if you're a grow operation and you've got 1,500 plants that are just about ready to harvest, you're kind of an attractive target. So there are some law enforcement challenges that may be presented. The other thing that I mentioned, that large amounts of growed or grown, growing, grown, or stored marijuana can have an unpleasant odor. I'm told it's much like a skunk smell, a skunk odor. As I, have already indicated, processing can involve flammable, flammable materials and chemicals. Then there are the other issues you don't think about. If you're processing marijuana, where does the waste go? How do you handle that? How do you handle it safely? How do you handle it so that people don't try to, if you will, get the leavings and, oh, there's a little bit of usable marijuana still in that, that debris? How's that handled? Should the city actually get involved in determining who gets the license, and if so, how should we do that? And are there other public's health, safety and welfare issues that we haven't even thought of yet because it's kind of new to the city or state of Michigan? Finally, there is this issue, is, is there exposure to city officials and employees who are actually engaging in this process? That's an open question. And I, I want to talk about that in some, and this is what I just learned because this case was just decided by the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals earlier this month. Now, the caveat is, it involves recreational marijuana in Colorado, not medical marijuana. Court made a point of saying that in a footnote. But this, the case was permitted to go forward. This was a family who owned land that had, had very rustic housing on. They used it to, I think, board or keep their horses. They would go out there and use it basically for recreational purposes. It had a view of Pike's Peak. And then when Colorado permitted recreational marijuana, somebody bought an adjacent parcel and started growing marijuana. And the owners of this recreational piece said, um, we have a problem here because the noxious odors from the marijuana are disturbing and have reduced the value of our property. Also, because the growing of marijuana is unlawful under federal law, they are a crime target. And that's also caused our property value to be reduced. Because nobody wants to live next door to a marijuana operation. So they filed a claim under the Federal Racketeer Influenced and Corrupt Organizations Act, or RICO. And the court said, we're going to permit you to go forward with that claim against not only the property, the adjacent property owner who's the marijuana grower, but I think also against Governor Hickenlooper. Because he's the official and his state administration permitted this operation to get a license. And his county officials as well permitted, there was a county issued license as well. So that's something that everybody, I think, is going to be watching to see whether or not there's exposure to local and state officials by permitting some of these operations. Again, the caveat is, this was recreational. But if, if, if it's successful, I don't see any reason that it would bar a similar type of lawsuit in other states that permit medical marijuana. So what did we do in attempting to craft together our ordinances that I've already alluded to, our zoning and like? I, I borrowed heavily from two communities, Boulder, Colorado and Fort Collins, Colorado. Michigan State Extension Service also had a draft ordinance that they put together. I followed that to some degree. Obviously, close attention to the act itself. And, and taking Section 199 of the city charter, I tried to incorporate of as much of that as possible. So it's to give voice to what the citizens of this community have already spoken on or to in regard to the regulation of marijuana. The proposed ordinances attempt to address some of the issues that I pointed out, the nuisance odor, safe extraction of residents, and, and we've decided to, as you can see by the separation distances and where they can be located, we've decided to disperse the facilities throughout the city so as to not have one part of the community be burdened by medical marijuana facilities. The other thing is, again, this goes to the, the case that I just alluded to. It requires the operators to get insurance and indemnify the city, its officers and employees. I'm guessing that if, if the feds come after you, or the city, for violation of the law, nobody is necessarily going to go to jail, but there may be some heavy fines. So we're going to turn to the facility operators and say, you're on the hook. We're not going to pay that. The city's, the city's purse, the city's public treasury is not, shouldn't be put at risk by permitting you to engage in, at least under Michigan law, is protected activity, but under federal law is not. And so you have to protect the, the public purse, if you will, by paying any fine that might come our direction. Then the other is, well, how do we pick the winners and losers? And as I said, we're going to have unlimited facilities, as suggested, except for the provisioning and dispensaries. Well, how do we decide who wins and loses? What I don't want, or what, what I want to avoid is somebody challenging the city or the city clerk to say, oh, you, you didn't permit me, you refused my application, and I think that was an abuse of your discretion. And I'm going to take you to court. Even though the abusive discretion standard is high, just fighting that is going to cost some time and money. Even if, if, if you give discretion to the clerk or some other city employee to say, who's the winner, who's the loser? Instead, what we're suggesting is, we have a checklist, and it's a very ministerial approach, that the clerk gets the application, can say, do you have this, do you have this? As long as he checks the boxes, you're okay. If there's a box that is unchecked, that application is rejected. For all those that check the box and do it properly, they will be assigned a number, a unique number. And then they will be put in a lottery, and we will pick the seven numbers. They will be able to say to the state, the city of Kalamazoo permits me to operate as a provisioning center slash dispensary within the city. Now, we may pick more than just seven because there may be people who get rejected at the state level. But we, we want the state to pick the winners and losers. All we will do, and as I allude to in the next slide, we'll create an application period. As I said, the clerk will review the application, see if they're complete. And then we will have a, a public draw, so it's, it'll be transparent. And then the winners of that lottery will get a provisional license. They can show to the state that they've got provisional approval from the city. If the applicant gets a state-issued license, they have to do a few more things. They have to have their facility inspected to make sure it conforms with all of our codes. And if they do, if, once their building conforms with our codes, then we issue a state, I'm sorry, a city operating license that will run concurrent with their state license. So when the state license expires, the city license expires. And when you renew for the state, you got to renew it with the local level. And so by that, there's no real discretion exercised on the clerk's office. It's either yes or no. And so we avoid that abusive discretion standard. Now, what are the next steps? I've given you a presentation this evening. I've tried to, I guess I've prattled on for about 45 minutes. I'm going to make a similar presentation with the Planning Commission so that they are prepared and to hear the, and pass on the, these two zoning amendments that will come to them hopefully in August. I hope between now and August, or the end of August, we'll have at least two or three public outreach meetings to get citizen input on what we are proposing. I'll incorporate that feedback into the ordinances, finalize the language, and then hopefully the city commission will consider the ordinances in September slash October. Again, with the goal that it is done, and we pushed, we've, if you will, cleared that milestone well in advance of that December 15th opening of the window. I would like to close by thanking those members who sat on the, the work group that I worked with. Like I said, the clerk's office, Pete Eldridge from the zoning, planning and zoning, Captain Boyson of K-Vet, and Ryan Simpson's, our economic development department. All of them contributed, and their, their point of views were helpful in coming to the conclusions and the recommendations that we will be making to, to the commission. Finally, I'll leave you to this thought. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the TV series Weeds. It was popular like from 2008 to 2012, I guess. And it's the story of a woman who finds herself, her husband dies, leaves her penniless with two teenage boys. And she finds that if she sells a little marijuana on the playground to parents who are watching soccer games, she can make a little bit of money. are watching soccer games, she can make a little bit of money. So it starts to snowball. And at some point, Ms., the character Nancy Botwin says, there's always cash when we sell drugs. That's why we sell drugs. And that's why we're going to have the commercialization of marijuana in Michigan because there's money to be made there. There's a lot of money to be made there if there's going to be up to a billion dollars of retail sales. And that's on the high end. On the low end, it's even like $650 million. It's probably somewhere between that. On the other hand, I'm not convinced that the Medical Marijuana Act is a panacea. I don't, it's the home occupation, the small operation with caregiver and five patients can still operate. That does not go away. And that person is not regulated by this act. So the licensing board can limit the potency of the marijuana, how much THC can be contained in terms of a percentage. If you're working with your own caregiver and they've developed a strain that's a little more potent, they're not covered by that rule. So there's that. So I think there still will be that cottage industry. Additionally, there's going to be a price point at which the market is going to control. And at some point, people may say, geez, I'd like to go down to the provisioning center and buy my marijuana because I know I can do it legally, but I can get it from either my caregiver or I can get it from a black market source at a little bit less. It may not be as pure, but I can get more marijuana for my buck. So that's not going to go away either. So to think that licensing of marijuana facilities is going to solve some of those other issues, that's not going to be the case. On the other hand, there may be some people say, I want to be law abiding, I will get my marijuana, I know it's pure, I know what its content is, and I can be, I can use it with safety. And this is really what this is aimed at in terms, in part from the state, is to provide a safe product to patients who need it. On the other hand, as I indicated, a week hasn't gone by when people haven't called this office. What does the city of Kalamazoo do? How soon can I get in the door? The other thing I want to point out, and I neglected to say it when we were talking about the lottery system. What the city does not want, at least the city administration does not want, is when we say, we'll start accepting applications. For people to be camping out like it's Thanksgiving before Black Friday and there's a tent city on the steps of City Hall waiting to be first in line. The whole point of the lottery system, it doesn't matter whether the first applicant or the 101st applicant, everybody's going to be treated the same. So don't camp out on City Hall steps expecting to get first in line that's going to give you an edge. It doesn't. It won't. You'll, if your application is received that first morning, you'll be given a unique number and you'll be put in the lottery with everybody else. And if your number's picked, good for you, but it may not be, depending on the number of applications there are. So we're going, what I want to do is discourage anybody who thinking that by being, getting there first in the door, they somehow are, get a better shot. You don't. And so we don't, again, I don't want that tent city to create a problem for other people who have legitimate reasons to come into City Hall, either to pay bills or to see administrative officials in the city because they can't get around the cluster of people who've taken over the steps of City Hall. So with that, questions?
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a few questions here I wanted to start with.
Commissioner, could I interrupt just for a second? Mr. Attorney, could you go back and put the recommendations back upon the screen, if you would? Unless you had wanted to see any other screen. I think that's, with all of what we heard tonight, I guess.
That one?
Yeah, that's reasonable for now. The lottery piece is interesting, too. Commissioner, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mayor. So first of all, I just need a little clarification relative to, is there any real functional difference between the dispensary, as mentioned in our charter amendment, and a provisioning center? Or in essence, is it the same activity?
It is the same activity, however, in order to have a provisioning center, you have to, it has to be operated by a caregiver and/or a patient. So if you're not one of those two, you can't operate a dispensary, cannabis dispensary. You can operate a provisioning center under state law, but under our city charter, you couldn't because the charter language that was adopted by the voters require that the cannabis dispensary be operated by a caregiver and/or patient.
So I'm still a little confused about the interaction of our own charter amendment, the fact that the existing law is staying in place, and this clarifying action, you know, what, you know, the clarifying follow-up action does not seem to recognize the difference between dispensaries and provisioning centers. Is that right?
Well, the state, no. The state had no reason to recognize what the city of Kalamazoo was doing.
Right.
We were wandering in the wilderness.
But we could still, under the umbrella of all this activity, we could still go ahead?
I struggled with it because it's not an easy question to answer. I was saying, do I ignore the charter language that was adopted by city voters, which is a reflection of their intent and what it is they want the city to do? And that has some value, if you will. And then, on the other hand, here's what the state legislature did. As long as what the city voters adopted doesn't conflict with the state, I think it's okay. And in fact, it gives us a guideline in terms of, state law doesn't say what hours you can be open. The city charter amendment says, or whatever they are, I forget, like seven to nine or whatever it is. Okay, that's the starting point. That's the hours we will permit the sale of medical marijuana, whether it's provisioning center or dispensary. It says that a dispensary should be located in a commercial district. Okay. In a, quote, "an appropriate commercial district." Okay, we can do that. We can say where, what is an appropriate commercial district for location of dispensaries or provisioning centers. So to that end, since the charter amendment is a manifestation of intent of the citizens, I think you have to give voice to that as much as you can, as long as it doesn't conflict with state law. Unfortunately, there's that part where they said, in order to have a dispensary, you have to, it has to be operated by a caregiver slash...
Dispensary or provision center?
Dispensary. Provisioning center can be operated by someone who's not involved in the use of marijuana at all. And I wouldn't be surprised, there's a lot of people who don't use marijuana who think there's a buck to be made here, and they're willing to make the buck. And so it's no different than the person who has a liquor license who never touches the stuff. So there's that group of people, but under the charter amendment that was adopted by city voters, it says in order to be a cannabis dispensary, it can only be operated by a caregiver slash patient.
But presumably, to the casual observer, you would not necessarily be able to tell the difference between dispensary and provisioning center?
That's correct.
Okay. So you're proposing a limit there between those two categories?
Yep.
And, but then I have a question about the no limit recommendations related to the other activities. But is it a fact that by having zoning or distance requirements, does that create a functional limitation of total locations just by employing the zoning limitations?
Yes, it does.
And is it pretty easy to look at that and say, well, once you start counting this up, there's only, you know, 10 places that could be, or no places that could be?
I don't have it because it was still kind of small, we haven't blown it up sufficiently. But Pete Eldridge created a map of the city with all the zonings and with all the separation distances. And so you can figure out where you can legitimately locate a medical marijuana facility, at least the ones in the commercial, I mean, sorry, the manufacturing zones. The problem becomes, okay, I can locate it in that space, is that space available for use? It may be tied up with somebody else. So the market and the separation distances will dictate how many of these grower, processors, and like will be able to locate in the city. That's a function of, you know...
Some number, which you could probably roughly determine, at least in a theoretical way, perhaps.
Yes, you can kind of make an eyeball at him, probably. But I don't know what that is.
Yeah. So I just wanted to reiterate, have you reiterate something that you mentioned early on about your participation of city departments? So you had active participation from public safety, from community planning and development? And is there, I mean, I am presuming that there is tacit support from all those departments for this recommendation?
Yes. I mean, public safety has its druthers, but Captain Boyson did not voice an objection. I think, you know, reluctantly is going, the problem is, at least now it's out in the open, if you will. I mean, and I'll say, and I don't mean any disrespect to Chief Hadley and his department, but they see things usually a little differently than a lot of folks do. And I understand that. And with good reason. And so, but on the other hand, there are a lot of law enforcement officials across...
I understand the state law, in essence, gives a county entity no jurisdiction as relates to enforcing any of these kinds of things. So it means all those decisions will be made by townships or villages or cities in the state. So related to that, is it worth consideration for us to have some discussion? And, I mean, this could change everything for us if, whether it's anything, anybody that borders against the city of Kalamazoo, whether it's City Portage or Comstock Township or Kalamazoo Township or Parchment, for example, any thought about attempting to create some kind of a universal county-wide approach to the issue?
Well, I have heard through other sources that most of the townships are taking the wait-and-see approach. They don't want to really get involved at this point until some of the, if you will, the smoke is cleared. However, the cities in particular, the big cities, Portage and Kalamazoo, and I'll say this, because of the way townships are governed under state law and villages versus what cities can do, cities have a citizen-adopted charter. Townships, their charter, if you will, is state law. They can't change it. Whatever the powers that they have or whatever the powers they exercise is defined, whereas the city charter, adopted by the citizens of this community, define the powers of the city within certain realms of state law. But they have a lot more flexibility. So, and I don't know village law that well since I've never really practiced it. I've researched it a little bit, but it's been several years. Those, likely, those entities could get the call at their township board level because there's no room for amending the charter township act by the local citizenry. But a city charter can be amended, as I alluded to. Cities charters, if they have an initiative provision, that can be an ordinance that, so even if this body says, we don't want any facilities, we don't, we're going to not permit them, somebody can get a petition up and put it on the ballot. And so now you're, you've lost the ability as elected officials to maybe do some things that you think is a better approach. And I think, to some degree, the value of that has already been, if we didn't have Section 199, this would have been a lot easier approach to things without trying to fit state law with this kind of weird charter amendment that, as I said at the time, I didn't think was very well-written. But there's aspects of it that I've tried to employ. So, and I can, I'll, in further answer to your question, Commissioner, I have been talking with the city of Portage attorney. They are, and I don't want to get too far ahead and say what they're going to do, but they're looking at this as well. I don't know what the recommendation would be, but I will say at least this, the idea for a lottery was, kind of came from them, as to how are you going to pick the, how do you view whether the city should pick the winners and losers? And for the same analysis that I gave you, don't want that abusive discretion challenge, we're going to limit the number of provisioning centers. How do we pick those people who might get a license? And the lottery system was, I think is going to be employed in Portage. I don't know that, and there's two other cities in the county, Parchment and Galesburg, I don't know what they're going to be doing. They don't really have a, I mean, they have their own legal counsel, but they're not, I'm not in conversations with them as I am with Randy Brown and Charlie Bear out of
Commissioner Mazzarri?
Thank you. Wanted to follow up a little bit more on sort of the dispensaries versus provisioning centers. From what I'm hearing, it seems that under Section 199, the, you know, status quo right now is that that's illegal. You know, we had the Supreme Court case and that's why we don't have any. And then matching that up with the new rule, it seems, you know, we had that language in there, as you mentioned, you have to be a caregiver or a, or a patient. Whereas the new rules by the state, which we're attempting to sort of license here, says the exact opposite.
Well, there's no state rules, at least by the licensing board, there's a state statute.
Yeah. And that says you cannot be a caregiver or patient, correct?
No. That doesn't, you're not precluded from being a owner of a provisioning center if you are a patient or caregiver.
Oh, okay.
Under state law.
So you can be a...
You may, yeah.
You may, but you don't? Okay. I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood that part then.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Well, that applies to one of the other ones, though.
Yeah, there's other, there's other, some of the other facilities you can't be, but at least in regard to a provisioning center, you may be a patient or caregiver and operate a provisioning center.
Okay. Then that alleviates the concern I had because I misunderstood that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear enough.
Other questions, Commissioners? Vice Mayor?
First of all, thank you for all the work, really. That's a big help. I was at the thing at noon and it seemed so complicated, but you made it understandable. I'm very glad that we're going to do public meetings to bring this out and let the community get involved in the discussion. I think that's great. My question is with regard to the safety compliance. We can't set safety compliance records, regulations in the city, can we? They're set by the state?
For the product itself, yes.
For the product itself.
We can require certain security around a facility, for instance, lighting, maybe fencing, an alarm system or some type of, we can do that, but we can't regulate the safety of the product.
Right. So did you say that the state can regulate how much THC is in the product?
I think they will be able to do that, yes. Because the city can't, but I'm sure that the state board could adopt a rule limiting the amount of active ingredients in a strain of marijuana.
Okay, so the local centers, they would just make sure that people that were distributing it here were in conformity with the state standards?
That's the whole point of the testing center, because they will test and do you meet or exceed the state rule.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners? Do we, so we don't know what Portage is planning to do at this point.
They've, I've had some conversations with Charlie Bear and Pete Eldridge has had conversations with his opposite number in the city of Portage. They're working through the process, they haven't shared anything with us that is substantive. They've given me an idea. It appears that they're going to limit facilities to some degree, again, maybe on the one for every 10,000 or something like that. And they're likely to employ a lot of, or lottery system to see who gets those licenses. That is my indication, but I don't want to get too far ahead of what the city of Portage is going to do because that's really their call. And I don't want to let the cat out of the bag too much because I don't want to create problems for a neighboring community.
Well, I think that your task force took a reasonable approach to this and that you went about this work really trying to figure out how to allow this to happen, unlike sometimes when we are trying to stop something from happening. And so I want to thank all of you folks for that. Everything I see, it just, it seems reasonable. It's not a tack on folks that are trying to have a center or trying to be a processor or whatever, and it's not something that I think that, well, I just think it's all pretty reasonable. So thank you for the work.
You're welcome.
Do we have other questions for the attorney? Commissioner Sykes?
I actually just have a point of clarification. For the cannabis dispensaries, the requirement to have a caregiver or patient, is that a requirement that they be the operator or requirement that they be on... requirement that they be the operator or requirement that they be on staff?
That they be the owner of the business.
Gotcha, okay. That's my only question, thank you.
Commissioner Mazzarri?
You know, thinking on some of those limitations, have we put much thought into sort of the lottery system in combination with those space limitations? I assume when folks apply to the state, they'll need to have a location, presumably. You know, you might have two folks with two locations that would conflict, but, you know, if only one gets the lottery, then it doesn't really matter. I'm just curious how, if we've thought much about that potential conflict, or if that is just something we'll deal with if we get to that.
I think we're going to have to cross that bridge when we get there. We're going to have a separation distance between provisioning centers, and so if somebody gets their license first, I mean, they may get first person on the block, and the individual who comes by and gets that state license days or months later, and if they've got an option on a property that's within 500 feet of the first one, they're not going to be able to exercise that because they'll be out of compliance with our ordinance. But that's why we're issuing a provisional, because the individual is going to have to show when they ask for that state license that they comply with our ordinances. So technically, the state shouldn't issue that license to the second individual who may have an option or ownership of property that's within 500 feet of a previous approved applicant. But we can't necessarily know that the state will do that. That's why they've got to come back to the city once they get that state approved, and we'll do our due diligence, and I'm sorry, we can't issue a state, a city license because you're within 500 feet, even though you may otherwise have got some approval. So that's one of the challenges, or the practical challenges that we'll have to work through as this system and scheme gets rolled out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, I do want to add on and say here, I think you have nicely laid out what is actually somewhat complicated and a little bit obscure yet, proposal, kind of giving us a frame for that, and that helps a lot. Obviously, though, there's many, many particulars that would have to be filled in before this could go live in all kinds of ways, with details tied to any one of those particulars. Is all that, then, would be included in the final ordinance, all the details, or will it be some kind of administrative functions that don't have to be part of the ordinance that could be filled in concurrent or later or something along those lines?
It will be the latter, for the very reason you've indicated. There's a lot of moving parts, we're still waiting for the rules that are coming out from the state. And so, if I knew what the state was going to do, I probably wouldn't be standing in front of you, because if I had that ability to predict the future, I'd be in Vegas making a lot of money on sports betting. So, I don't know. So as a result, there is, a draft ordinance contains a provision authorizing the city clerk to adopt the necessary administrative rules to carry forward the operation of the ordinance. And it gets at some of the questions that have been raised in terms of, what do you do if, kind of thing. And it'll also put us, and it'll also probably issue some rules as to how the lottery is going to work and the like. But that was, those are things that don't necessarily need to be in ordinances, but if you authorize a city clerk as one of your appointees to get that administrative ability, then he can put those rules together, and we can even go so far as, before they become effective, he's got to bet them with this body, we can go that far if you'd like.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
So, the anticipation is there's going to be a lot of money involved in this, but from what you're telling us, very little of that comes to the city.
Based upon, again, I made some assumptions, but I don't know.
Now, I thought that I saw, heard at noon that you said 25% comes to the cities, right?
Yes.
I thought I heard that 30% goes to the counties, is that right?
I'd have to look at the statute.
And they don't have anything to do about regulation or nothing, or, but they get 30%? That sounds right. No, it doesn't sound right. So anyhow, we better not count on this to fix the roads, I don't think.
Are there other questions for the attorneys?
Yeah, for those of you who may be interested, the way that the excise tax we've broken down is as follows. Trying to find it. It's, here we go. 25% to municipalities, 30% to counties, in which there's, a facility has to be located in the county. So if you don't have any facilities in your county, you don't get any money. So, you have to have at least one facility. So, 25 to municipalities, cities, villages, townships. 30% to counties, 5% to, another 5% to counties, and then 30% to the state. And 5% to the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. So.
So, them coles get some money. Commissioner Anderson?
Interestingly enough, one thing that was mentioned today at our task force meeting was that there is nothing out of the split that's allocated to treatment or recovery programs or anything along those lines, which is unlike the tax that is associated with alcohol sales, where a portion of that, I don't know if it's constitutionally or statute, you know, a statute or not, but is allocated to treatment programs, PA $2, so.
Oh, and I should say that that extra 5% to the counties, that actually goes to the sheriff. So it's 30% to the county general fund, the five, additional 5% is allocated to the sheriff.
Make it $25. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, for the report.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioners, I do have it on good authority that tonight the City of Lansing is diving into this issue, or did, and it was a little chaotic. That's my word. What? Have you not done enough? No.
What I understand, and again, I haven't verified this, is that some advocacy groups presented the Lansing Council with three versions and basically said, "Adopt one of them, or we're going to get out the vote and we'll adopt one of them," by, through the ballot box. So it was a bit of a strong-arm tactic, I guess you could say, on behalf of those advocates for the City of Lansing to do something. And that, again, underscores my observation that if the city commission doesn't do it, the voters will.
Thank you. We are now at Item D. Citizens comments on any item this evening, please step to the podium, you'll have four minutes, give us your name and whether you live within the city. And I'd also ask, if you're planning to speak, don't hesitate, just let's move this forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Zachary Lassiter, I live in the city. Two questions. One is regarding the limited number of licenses. If someone gets the, wins the lottery, so to say, and either goes out of business or doesn't move forward, will they sell that license like the liquor licenses do that are limited, or will the, or will the city lottery off an additional one of its allocation? The second is the map that you, that has been made by Mr. Eldridge regarding the restricted areas, is there a way that that could be made public? Does this further moves forward so people can kind of see where the layout could possibly be? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, hello again. My name is Alfonso, I'm living in the Oakwood neighborhood, and just, it's amazing to hear what City Attorney Robinson has to say about medical marijuana and the future of it. I definitely believe on the, I don't want to say the power of cannabis, but I do believe in the fact that it, for thousands of years, if you've done just a little bit of research, this product, this plant, has been what they call a cash crop. And we might not look at it right now in, like, it might not bring a lot of money to us, you know, that's one of the considerations, but it's still bringing some income to our city, and it is a form of what I would like to call it an aggressive form of income. If you look at the state laws that were approved back in December, or, yeah, approved, it sort of gives you the framework for a full legalization of cannabis, assuming that this takes place in 2018. And as a citizen of Kalamazoo, and I'm sure there are many more, and I wish there were more people today here to discuss this, if we really, as a city, take advantage of the, of what they are offering us, and we are able to make it work and provide opportunity to the people from our city and whoever really else wants to get involved, I believe it's something that 10 years from now, 15 years from now, we will all look back and benefit and say, "Hey, look at that." We only, you know, we took, we took the risk and it is working out. And in the way that we can, the research behind that, you just have to look at Colorado, you just have to look at Washington. I myself visited the Washington State, and I went to the, one of the recreational places, and I talked to one of the individuals there, and they were mentioning, he said, "Well, you know, it's brutal, we were, we get taxed to death here." The belief is that 37% of their, of every dollar goes to, goes into taxes, and among all the money that goes into taxes, it gets divided in different facilities, which I believe Commissioner Anderson brought it up, like substance abuse and law enforcement and so on. So, I know that this is something very important for the city to consider, because we know the stigma behind cannabis, but I also believe that the city and our officials and really the population in general should be able to set that aside for a moment and see the benefits that we can get from allowing this medicinal, recreational, whatever you want to call it, herb to actually be used in the city. And, and of course, in a certain way, because we don't want people to go crazy at smoking weed all over the place, but you gotta, we definitely need to look at all the details of it and make sure that we could take, we could take advantage of it, because it's a great opportunity for our city to consider, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Please also sign in if you spoke tonight on the sign-in sheet by the flags. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Angela Brandt-Tyle, and I was just wondering, because of so many-
Ma'am, do you live in the city?
I do.
Thank you.
City township. I was inquiring about, like, the people that are in wheelchairs. We have a lot of food truck businesses coming up locally, and transportation has been one of the subjects, you know, discussed tonight, so are there going to be provisions that are not allowing mobile units to dispense or to provide for people who have transportation issues such as wheelchair, paraplegics, that really have some serious transportation issues? Just something to think about.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
My name is David Banack, I do live in the city limits. I just wanted to remind everybody that today we're talking about medical marijuana, and yes, there is a lot of money to be made, but let's make sure we're thinking about this as a medical treatment. It does offer one of the most effective medicines for a variety of illnesses and conditions, and one that we really need to think about is opioid addiction. Marijuana can be one of the ways that we can combat that in this community, and I really would like to see, as Commissioner Anderson brought up, I'd like to see us earmark some of this money for that cause. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Brandt Johnson, and I represent some business people in the medical marijuana industry, and I am from Lansing, and I have a client who lives here. And it is true that Lansing has had a little bit of chaos when it comes to the medical marijuana industry. Currently, it is about 74 dispensaries in Lansing. That's because they let the horse out of the barn before they decided to implement rules. The problem with there being so many dispensaries in Lansing is that it taints the entire industry. The legislature allows for, the Facilities Act allows for five enterprises. And because there's 74 dispensaries in Lansing, the whole community just thinks about dispensing, dispensing, dispensing. However, there are four other enterprises that people can involve themselves in, that can contribute to the community and can create jobs and make money. And so I don't want you all, or any community, to be tainted just by the view of dispensaries because there are four other entities that people can conduct themselves with, growing, processing, transportation, and testing. The city attorney went through all of that. One other thing of revenue was municipality sharing 3% of gross receipts from dispensing, dispensaries proportionately, depending on the number that you have in your town. And you can also generate money from your licensing, up to $5,000, inspection fees, monitoring fees, so long as they're not punitive. So those are other ways that the municipality can run done right now, and you don't know who they are. And this is your opportunity to have these people come out of the dark, these activities to be discontinued in back alleys, for you to monitor these people, have them come apply to you, so you know who they are, inspect them. The City of Kalamazoo can do background checks for applicants, can make them do business plans, you can inspect them and you can monitor them. Currently, you don't know who's doing what, and that's a public and safety issue. And the patients would be able to get products that are safe, clean, and monitored. Currently, you don't know what they're doing. So I believe this is a public and safety issue, more so than a financial issue, because there are ways to make money. I look at the marijuana leaf as a computer. The computer, who thought about scanners? Facebook, iPhones. When you look at the marijuana leaf, who thought about shatter? You got to have incinerators, you got to have-
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, hello, my name is Allison Park, I am not a resident of Kalamazoo, I live in Richland. I want to go back to the distinction between the medical cannabis dispensaries and the provisioning centers as defined by the state, and I'm a little confused on how the state is going to be distinguishing the difference between those two types of applications or licenses as the city is defined. Specifically, there is no separate licensing process by the state for medical cannabis dispensaries, it's simply for the provisioning centers. So I'm not really sure how the city intends to clarify which applicant group is receiving the licenses. Along those same lines, do you guys intend to hold separate lotteries for the dispensary applicants versus the provisioning center applicants? And what do you do if the state doesn't ward any licenses to dispensary applicants? Would those three licenses remain vacant, or would they be given to applicants for the provisioning centers? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Jen Zalinski, I'm with Danaskis Consulting and Development, I represent industry. Mr. Robinson, you gave a phenomenal presentation, it's one of the best by far that I've seen, and believe me, I have been to many, many municipalities in the last several months. Nice job. Thank you, Commissioner, for coming here tonight and taking in all that is medical marijuana here in the state of Michigan. I, too, as some of the commissioners had questions of, as well as Allison who just spoke, with regards to the medical cannabis dispensaries versus the provisioning centers, I understand that that's part of your ordinance and within your city charter. One thing I did want to point out with that, however, is if you allow for a medical cannabis dispensary that's not going to be state-operated, so any of the revenue from the 25% excise tax that will be dispersed among municipalities is not- percent excise tax that will be dispersed among municipalities is not going to be included, as I understand it, how it's been defined tonight. So something to consider. You know, I know amending an existing ordinance or a charter is not an easy task. However, it's just some food for thought. If you do allow for these additional dispensaries, you're not necessarily collecting any of the revenue that could be had. Additionally, with regards to the excise tax, and again, Mr. Robinson, you gave a great example, however, I think a thousand facilities is rather high. I think in our first year, we could expect to see around three hundred, I would say five hundred maximum tops, and probably more in subsequent years, but likely what will happen is after the free market kind of shakes things out and you get your real entrepreneurs that are here to make a business within the industry, the free market will shake it out and your number will stabilize a bit more. But I do think a thousand was a bit high right out of the gate in the first couple years. And then additionally, I believe it was Commissioner Anderson, you asked about substance abuse treatment as part of the statute, and to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any pharmaceutical industries or any medical industry that pays in towards substance abuse treatment. However, that being said, as Mr. Robinson mentioned, that there is a recreational initiative underway right now in the state of Michigan, and there is an earmark for substance abuse treatment within the recreational bill that's being circulated right now. So I just wanted to kind of give some information on that. So I do appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, everybody. And again, Mr. Robinson, I know you spent quite a bit of time on that presentation. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kathy Cooney, and I reside in the city of Kalamazoo. I just want to say I really appreciate the discussion. I really appreciate the hard work that you've put into the report. I come from this as a, from a personal place. I am very close with someone who knows a lot about the medical marijuana issue. When, when the city had to get rid of the dispensaries, I don't know, a year ago or whatever it was, I was very disappointed by that, because I came to really respect the medical marijuana issue and the need for it, really respect people who have a need for it. I believe there is a medical need for it. It's beneficial to people. So when things closed down, I saw a real safety concern. People were beginning to have to meet in, as was said before, back alleys, you know, in parking lots, and things just weren't as safe. You didn't know what you were getting into necessarily, so that was a big concern for me. I appreciate hearing about the revenue as well, but I did become much more closer to the issue of medical marijuana, and I, when the recreation marijuana issue came up and the petitions started going around, I'm like, I might want to circulate these petitions because I just saw that the need was there. We need to get through this. We need to do this. But I just want to say that I, the medical marijuana, I think, is where we need to go, and I really appreciate you all talking about it, and I appreciate being able to, that the public, that you're bringing it to the public as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address the Commission on this end, or anything this evening? Seeing no one, Mr. Attorney, would you care to address any of the comments that came forward, or do you want to hold and do that?
No, no. I think everybody would be-
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. In regard to, and I'll try to do these in rough order, the first question was asked, are they going to be transferable? The answer is no. If you get a state operating license and you get the city permission to continue to go forward, and you don't, then that permission will expire, and the next person in line will get an opportunity. The map is in rough draft form at the public forums that we hope to have. It is anticipated that the map will be available. At this point, it's in very rough form, so, but when, I hope to have a finalized version, a bigger one that you can actually read at those public forums. People, and the other one regarding mobile dispensaries, people in wheelchair, currently under state law, you have to identify the address of your facility, so there is no mobile dispensaries permitted under state law. And again, as I indicated, we can't do anything different than what the state law permits. Now, as, in answer to the question, though, we certainly will make dispensaries handicap accessible, as well as, and so that's part of building code. So if you're going to take a building and repurpose it, you got to come into compliance with the building codes, and that would include accessibility for people with disabilities. So even though we can't have mobile ones, that will be addressed in that fashion. The question, it was, a comment was raised that we currently don't monitor, and that was a policy choice back in 2010. The feeling was that the way the Medical Marijuana Act in 2008 was adopted, it seemed to, if you elevate and validate, the patient caregiver relationship. I'm not going to say it's the same as a, as a doctor-patient relationship, but it was akin to that, and that is a very, seemingly intimate, close relationship between a person who's providing product to a patient as opposed to someone who's out there just to make a buck. It wasn't necessarily a commercial relationship, and the city took the knowing step to say, "We're not, we're not going to require caregivers to register with the city. We don't want to have a list of people that might be subject to a Freedom of Information request, so I know, you know, their addresses, so I can, when they're out of town, I can break into their home and make off with marijuana." So that was a conscious policy decision made by the administration and accepted by the City Commission back in 2010. And so that, yes, we don't currently monitor, but there's a reason for that. The other is provisioning center versus dispensary, and I apologize if I didn't make it clear. If you're going to try to be a cannabis dispensary under, as recognized by the city charter, you will have to get a provisioning center license through the state. It is, so, and that's why the number of provisioning center, I'm sorry, dispensaries are included in the number of provisioning centers. So you will, for our purposes, you have to identify whether you're one or the other, but you're going to be applying to the state as a provisioning center. In regard to, and very well may be true, as if it's a thousand dollars, and remember, I was making some assumptions, a billion dollars' worth of sales, and that is true. If, if there are only five hundred facilities throughout the state, and ten of them happen to be located in the city, and there's a billion dollars' worth of sales, yes, we would get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state, to do with whatever we wish with. It's not dedicated to treatment, it's not dedicated to monitoring the industry, it's cash that we can use for any purpose. And if we choose to use it for treatment or education, we can do that. On the other hand, if it doesn't generate a billion dollars, unless it only generates half a billion, then we're only going to get seventy-five thousand dollars. So, but these are just numbers on a chalkboard. I don't know where things are really going to fall out. One of the things I neglected to mention, and this is not really necessarily about regulation, but it's something you should be aware of. I am, as, one of the other hats I wear, is that I'm involved with the Mental Health Recovery Court in District Court, and a lot of those folks who have mental conditions and problems often have a substance abuse problem, alcohol or other, and oftentimes cannabis abuse. And while, as I understand from the literature, one cannot become addicted to marijuana, you can become dependent on it, and so there is that aspect to it. So, and there, and I defer to people who know the physiology and the medical stuff better than I, but that's my understanding, that there is, there can be a dependence or abuse of it as opposed to actual addiction. The other concern that ought, and I, again, I raised it with the recognition that there is now marijuana-infused products that you can ingest as opposed to smoke. And my understanding, and really reading the literature, is that is also, that can be problematic. Oftentimes, they're in like gummy bear form, or the traditional brownie, as I indicated, there's guacamole and the like. The problem, as I, as I understand it, when you inhale the marijuana and you smoke it, you get high quicker, and it, but it doesn't last as long. Whereas if you ingest it, much like when you take an aspirin for a headache, that headache doesn't go away in two minutes. It's like twenty minutes later before you start feeling the effects of the aspirin. Similarly, when you ingest the marijuana, you don't get that feeling until twenty or thirty minutes after you've eaten the substance. So unfortunately, and it's not necessarily limited to young people, but unfortunately, it seems to be more prevalent with younger people. I said, "I just ate the gummy bear. Why am I not feeling anything?" "Well, maybe I'll take another one." "Uh, I'm still not feeling it. Maybe I'll have one more." And so by the time they get to that thirty-minute, thirty-five-minute mark after ingesting the first one, they've, in essence, overdosed, I know that may not be the technical term, on marijuana and the THC, and that can be problematic, because, again, if you're not familiar with how that substance physiologically affects your body, you may be unintentionally injuring yourself, because you do lack, as I understand it, you lose coordination, your ability to reason. It's not like being intoxicated through alcohol, but there's a lot of similar things to it, that you could be, by overdosing, as I've used the term, you could be placing yourself in some, at risk for injury. So that's something that, going, this, this whole edible marijuana is going to create another issue for probably public safety personnel and maybe the community in general. I think I've answered all of the concerns. If there's any I've missed, let me know.
So I just want to make sure you continue to practice the law and not medicine. So qualifier, she is a practitioner of the law, a doctor technically of the law, not a medical, so keep that in mind. We're at Commissioners' comments. I'm just going to call you out if you have anything else. Commissioner Seitz was first.
Yeah, so I just want to take a minute to thank city staff, especially the city attorney's office, for being proactive on this issue. I think that's really valuable for us. I know I heard some concern that we might be making a financial decision here, and I'm not hearing that. It sounds like city staff is looking to honor, you know, the state law and also our voters who passed the ordinance, as I understand it. So I greatly appreciate that. Somebody said it earlier, and I can't remember who, so I can't attribute it to the right person, but you definitely took a really complicated issue and made it super simple, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all of the Citizens' commentary. It's really thoughtful, a lot of important questions posed, a lot of things to think about, so I'm grateful for that. I am interested a little bit in this idea of medical marijuana as a treatment for opioid use, sorry, and what that looks like. And then I just would say, too, if we do get into a position where we do have a great amount of revenue, or at least enough revenue to start considering where it goes, then I hope, and I'm sure folks would agree, that we would put some of that revenue into treatment so that we can, we can be responsible. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice-McCooney?
We all know that there's a healthcare bill being debated in Congress this week. Martin Luther King said one time, "Of all the forms of inequality, injustice in healthcare is the most shocking and inhumane." So there will be a rally and a march in Bronson Park, right across the street, Wednesday from five to six p.m., and we need to remember that democracy is not a spectator sport. We need to be involved, so you're invited to come to the rally and the march on Wednesday, five to six, in Bronson Park.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Attorney, Mr. Manager, can we ensure that this presentation gets on our website and gets into social media tomorrow?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. We are adjourned.